A.
Today, the Syracuse City Redistricting Commission is proud and honored to present our draft map of the new common council districts for the city of Syracuse. This marks the biggest milestone so far in the process that began in 2019 when the voters of Syracuse approved an independent commission to draw the new district boundaries commission, um, to draw the new district boundaries following the 2020 census. The commission was formed in the summer of 2021, consisting entirely of citizen volunteers. That's volunteer citizens. That's non-paid citizens. Okay? We have met, Jake's know me. We have met regularly over the past 10 months and have held public sessions, listening sessions in each of the five districts to gather input from the community before starting work on the draft map that we're presenting today. The commission's work was guided and directed by census data, legal requirements coming from the federal, state, and city laws, and the commission's priorities based on the public listening sessions. Not one single line of the draft map was drawn prior to completing the public listening sessions, where commissioners heard from the people and various communities in the city about their needs, desires, and preferences. The most important legal requirement for a new common council map is that the five districts have the same number of people in them. The difference between the largest and the smallest district cannot have more than 1,500 people, which is what they call the 5% of the ideal population of a district. The districts must also be of a single connected piece each and must have common shapes. If you look at the maps, you see that they're not, the, the shapes are not that off, far off. They also must abide by the Voting Rights Act. And last but not least, the commission is not allowed to favor one political party or candidate over another or take into account the residence of any current or former candidate. The commission's priorities for this draft map, based on public feedback and extensive discussion with the commission, were the creation of a black majority district. That's District A in the draft map. District A. While this is not required by the Voting Rights Act, the commission decided that creation of such a district would be beneficial specifically to the citizens of this district as well as to the common counselors in the future who would represent the needs of such a district. Keeping neighborhoods whole and grouping similar neighborhoods together as much as possible. We heard many comments at the public listening sessions about neighborhoods being divided between two or more districts in the current map, or very similar neighborhoods being separated. We also looked at community of interest. Communities of interest is a population that lives near each other, shares, shares social or economic interests. This means that whenever and wherever possible, they should not be divided into separate districts because that would dilute their ability to have their voices heard in representation. Wherever possible, the commission attempted to keep the communities of interest intact based on our understanding of what these were across the entirety of the city. We took into account the removal of I-81. The demographics of that area around the highway were carefully considered. Ultimately, the completion of the I-81 project and its changes will bring to the affected communities are too far in the future to be predicted with any amount of accuracy. And the commission determined that it would focus its draft map on the current status of this area. Resources within the districts. The commission tried to ensure that resources like grocery stores, parks, transportation, et cetera, are included in the same districts as the communities that use them. This should allow each district common counselor to advocate for the services that their constituents use or to push for things that their constituents lack. We worked and contracted, the commission did, with the Benjamin Center at SUNY New Pulse and Jeff Weiss of the New York Census and Redistricting Institute for legal logistical and data analysis assistance. These consultants were able to draw on decades of experience in redistricting to advise us, but the draft map is our product. It is a product of the citizens on the commission based on all of the priorities mentioned earlier. And also, the draft map is a product of compromise. We met, we fought, we talked, we discussed, okay? There were places where we were unable to draw the exact line we might have liked since that would have left to districts that were unbalanced beyond the 5% of allowed deviation. With only five common council districts and 26 distinct historical neighborhoods in the city of Syracuse, each district must reflect the diversity of the city rather than consisting only of similar demographics. Today, this is our last meeting. It's your last opportunity to come to us, talk to us, share your thoughts, your concerns, because when we meet again, we're gonna draw the last draft map. So we wanna hear from you. We need to hear from you. We must hear from you. So please, when you come up and talk on the mic, come stand right here where you see me with your mouth this way, your face this way, smiling because you're on the camera and people can see you. But we wanna know who you are and what you have to say about the redistricting. We hope you, we have a good and productive meeting. We thank you for coming. The time is now 5:41. We have until 6:30. It is my job as your moderator to keep your time clear but limited. I will be tagging shirt tails just to make sure that everyone who wants to speak gets the opportunity to speak. With that being said, the mic is open. Please come on. Thank you. You're welcome. Oh, Jake. It's the last one. Don't be shy. You just get up and come. Yeah. Come on, Charles. Come on.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, committee. My name is Charles Pierce L. I'm a native Syracusean. I live in the 4th District, and I'm also a member of the 16th District. And this is the last meeting that we'll have and providing that you don't get sued.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it's a fact. And I wanna address the issue of Central Tech moving. Central Tech is one of the oldest historical buildings left in that, in the African-American community, in the IT school. To take that out of that district is an insult not just to me, but to a lot of my people in the community, because we talk about that. That's, that's got a lot of historical stuff, and to take that out of our district purposely is, is, is not acceptable. And also, there's a lot of stuff that's going on. There's a lot of money and stuff coming into our neighborhood, particularly on the South Side where we used to have a lot of businesses. We don't have those businesses no more. We had mom and pop restaurants and businesses, and a lot of that comes from people coming together, educating each other about what's going on. But when we, also when the money comes here, like President Obama, President Obama sent money here and Schumer and Gillibrand and Buttercheck, you know, they have money, there's money planned for this city, city of Syracuse, particularly the South Side. And, you know, like I mentioned, one, one, one form or later, earlier, that we're the only ethnic group in this city, in county, that don't have our own culture center no longer. We have buildings down there on South Salina Street where they're building up and they wanna build up that we should be able to have a cultural center of, where we can educate and teach our young people the value of coming together and making, making common sense decisions on what's happening with the political arena, just like the, understanding the Constitution of the United States. You know, we got people, you know, there's a lot of people that we just let along, let politicians think they're, that they're the government and they're not. We, the people are the government, and we need to come together and let them know that. Because when we were protesting in the 60s, the late 50s, early 60s, they knew that they were not the government, and we need to get back to that, everybody, by any means necessary. So I just wanted to make that clear and say that because this is, so far, this is the last meeting, but if something goes wrong, it will not be the last meeting, even if I have to be the only one speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Could we have, um, Grant, if you could blow up the, for the part of the map where the, um, the ITC is, if you can. And, yes, you'd like to speak? You gotta go up here though.
So I am, I live, I live, um, in District A on the South Side, have, have lived there all of my life. And for those of you who know me, um, my family has, um, sorry, my name is Babette Baker. Made name is Morgan. My father's actually, my father's name is on this building somewhere out there, but that's how long we've been around. Um, I'm not, because I'm trying to talk into things, so I can stand it right here. Okay. So, um, the ITC Central Tech is still in our area. It has not been moved. Um, and if you look at the map that Graham has brought up, um, you'll see that it is still in the area. It has not moved out of the area at all. It's still within the, um, formerly is District A now, but number five. Yeah, go, and I, and we just wanna add that when we, when we were doing the maps, we could not break, break up census blocks. We could not do that. We had to keep census blocks intact. Okay.
The mic is open.
Or comment.
Or comment. Are you coming up? No, you just was moving. Okay. David, were you coming?
Yes.
There are no fighting.
They said there was no fighting. Good afternoon. My name is David Rufus, and I am a resident of the 4th District. I'm a lifer, Syracuse lifer, and, um, I've lived here all my life, and I've lived all my life in the 4th District, except for when we were early up on, um, West Fayette Street. I guess I have two questions. Thank you, Cookie, and thank you, Charlie, for, um, I'm sorry, Ida, in public, it's Ida. Thank you for, for, uh, thank you for asking those questions. I think for me, it was a little confusing too as to the need for those darker lines around it, so it would be a little bit confusing for me. I guess my biggest question and my biggest concern is the removal of places like, um, what is that one there? That is, this is District A. You're moving, um, Moore Ave and taking out Benderson Heights and, um, Jamesville Ave, you know? I didn't see what would, what necessitate them moving the Brighton line over. What is that line that's there next to Brighton? What, what street is that, that red line is on?
This vertical one.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay. That's 81. All right. Well, I guess for me, my concern is the removal of, uh, Berwin, Moore, Jamesville, you know, those places out of the 4th District, because those people who have lived there have voted together for a very, very long time. They've interacted together for a very long time. So I would be concerned that that would be one place where the, um, Voter Rights Act of, uh, 1964 and 1965 could be potentially a challenge there because there is a, a vote of commonality there, and it's, and at one time it was a majority black district. It may be a little different now, but I think that there is a possibility for some challenges there. Um, I think that we should consider that, that coming back. And then as we look up at the top, I couldn't quite understand, it looked like Moore, um, it looked like we're losing, um, a part of, but I guess not. I was gonna say Jackson and Taylor, but I now I see colors. So the colors are what represented. So just being, just, just for my own personal response, I worry about the fact that we would, might have been losing IT Central, but I see now that it's still there. I was the last class of Central Tech. When I finished with it, they opened Fowler. But, um, I think that one of the great things about this whole process, it has been open and honest, but I wanna make sure that we don't lose those pieces that we've had in the past in those places like Berwin, Moore, Jamesville, Roberts. I'm concerned about those coming out. And my, my president of the council, where is she today? Hey, Ms. Helen Hudson, thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your continuing to make sure that we are represented, that we all have an opportunity to participate. But I wanna make sure that you folks don't, don't really mess us up over here. So after I read this back, I'll call you, because I didn't really prepare. I didn't prepare, so I'm gonna call you tonight and get a little few more questions on this. Thank you very, very much.
I just wanna add one little small thing. We had no intention of messing anybody up. This is based on what we got from you guys, from all the meetings. We got all our input, all our map drawing. We listened to people who came to those meetings and who said they would desire this or they desired that, and then we drew the lines.
Based on law.
And then we drew the lines. Yes, sir. Okay. It ain't over yet. It ain't over yet.
Remember, we had to also follow laws. We had to stay within the population guidelines, so it was taking in your comments and account to all the other things that we had to consider.
What I want you to do, if you would, if you would go back and look at this diagram back here, and it shows you all the socionomics and why we did what we did. Okay? All right. Now, if you wanna ask a question, you gotta come up. We're really pleased that we have several common counselors here today, or former common counselors. And one I would like to do is I would ask if any one of them would like to come forward and have anything to say about the process and, you know, you're, you're thankful of what the work we've done so far?
My name is Jake Barrett. I was the common counselor in the 1st District for a number of years, and I, and true to form, I'd like to acknowledge to get all the acclamation she can get, but all the rest of you also, thank you very much for your work. Frankless job, and you did a great job. The SPD was the unit representative on the, the panel. Thank you very much. You're out it. Thanks, Captain. So for, for us out here, we, we sometimes don't know what the common counselors do, and sometimes they really don't do anything, but, uh, for the most part, they are hardworking people, and they try to represent their constituents as best as they can. We can't get to every single door, but we try to go to as many group meetings as we can to hear the pulse of, of what's going on. And, and we do our best. This is, uh, the nomenclature's changed for the district numbers. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, I try to get away from thinking about them in terms of, well, we're taking this from one and putting this in one, or we're taking this from B and giving it to four. We try to think about these and...
So you wiped the slate clean. Okay, great. So it's not 1, 2, 3, it's, it's A, B, and C. Uh, thank you for that.
...officially, or just for the process of public discussion, we thought it would help to, as you say, wipe the slate clean, but the city charter said that we numbers eventually.
Did the school district have any input into what you folks were doing? By design?
By law.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Robin Hamlin, and I teach at PSLA at Fowler, and I've been with the district for 28 years. And now, we are in, um, we look at going to school a little bit differently in that now the high schools are choice. Um, with the advent of the different CT programs, for example, at PSLA at Fowler, not only do we have cosmetology and electrical trades, but we also have drone technology. And all the different high schools have many different other CT programs. So it's not just the old neighborhood school model that it was even when I started back in 94. Now it is more of you apply if you have an interest in being part of this program at this high school. You apply, you interview, and so on, and so on, and so on. Um, elementary schools also, depending on 504, IEP, whichever elementary school has your program, your child is bused there. Um, so it's a little bit different. It's different than how it was even 10 years ago with, uh, school choice, and that's changed the game a lot. So this really, it's, uh, it's different than it used to be.
Thank you, Robin. I just have a couple more here.
I'm gonna pull your shirt.
Uh, I'm, um, so I asked the, the board members, when you were, you, you couldn't consider the school district, uh, but I, I have one question. When I was back in office, one of the things that I tried to get the city to look at was a, a tax incremental financing district for what was, uh, what it is, the Destiny Project. That didn't go anywhere, but I think with the Carter or 81 is, uh, it's called a TIF. Have, have you guys discussed that at all in your models? Okay. All right. So you're stuck, you're stuck to what you're supposed to do? Yeah. Well, we in the common council try to get off to do everything we don't have to do. Thank you, folks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Rita? Were you gonna have something? Excuse me, common counselor.
So, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Rita Paniawa, common counselor at large. Uh, just to, um, make sure that everybody knows that at this point, we cannot comment on the process. It's not allowed, but we do want to recognize all the hard work and endless hours you have put into it, and we thank you for all your work. And, uh, you know, this is coming together. It's, it's, it's hard work, and, uh, there's always, you know, opposition. It's, it's, it's the way, the nature of the job. Uh, but as counselors, I tell you that, uh, we do, you know, take, take this very seriously, and, uh, we, we do, you know, work intensely in our communities. And as you know, there's no one decision a counselor can make alone, so this is, you know, it's a consensus model. We, there's, for everything we do, there needs to be five votes, right? And, or more. So, so, uh, you know, this is, this is great work you have put together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, common counselor, President Hudson. Anybody else would like to say anything? Uh, you got, it's now 6 o'clock on the, on, we have, uh, just come up, sir. You are more than welcome. Just say your name and stand right here so you can be in the camera so people online can see you, if you don't mind.
Hello, my name is Marino Nave, and I live on the Upper North Side on Dale Street, and currently I serve as Third Ward Democratic Chair, Grand Dollar County Democratic Committee on the Upper North Side, and I'm director of the Dale Street Neighborhood Watch. Uh, I have been looking at all of these maps, and this is the first time I have an opportunity to come. I must say, um, I find these maps more in line for the residents of the city, that we're not taking one district and we're putting on over alongside another district where they don't have many concerns that one part of this district has. For myself, I live on Dale Street, and we, for a long time, we were mixed in with Cedric, which is a higher, upper echelon, and that area. Now it's gonna be put in with another district. So I have to say, I know it takes a lot of hard work, and I am pleased to see the hard work that's been done, and especially for the 1st Council District, to see North State Street, which was predominantly North Side, to be aligned with Dale Street and where it should be. In my opinion, without seeing any older maps, we're going back to what it was, neighborhood districts, neighborhood districts, where you knew your counselor representative, and they would have a lot in common. As one time I, county, we had county legislators, and when they were all my neighbors, Florida was mixed and thrown up, and now my legislators from the West. But I wanna commend all of you for the hard work, and, um, it's to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The mic is still open.
We're used to just sitting here.
And listening.
I'm Jeremy Montague. What is the ultimate fate of this commission? This, this commission? Are you guys going to decommission, reassemble at another time?
We're gonna meet until 2020. No. This is after, after our work is done, our work is done.
All right.
Yeah.
So this is more or less, um, I'm searching for the right word.
Finite.
No, continuing process, this commission?
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Well, that's what I was...
Once this is done and it's been approved by the county council, we're, we're done.
All right. Okay.
So we're done, but the ordinance that created us says on years 81, such and such happens, on years 82, such and such happens. So the ordinance...
But we...
10 years, 10 years after that.
But we, which is a question. Weirdo.
That was, that was my question. I was, I was concerned about continuity and consistency.
There'll be a new group.
All right.
Which you can join.
Maybe.
Yeah.
If I, if I had known about this group two years ago, I would have been very interested.
Okay. We'll keep an eye out.
Yeah, I would say, which is a great reason why you should always be going to your city website and looking for information, because that, that lets you know what all the planning and the zoning meetings are, and that information about this commission being formed was on that page. So, um, please always visit your, your city of Syracuse government website. Great, great, great information.
I knew you were coming. I just thought I'd wait you out. How you doing, Sarah? How are you? Good.
Kenneth Hills. Um, so my question is, might be one that's already been answered at other meetings, but just for those who don't know or haven't asked, my question becomes, a lot of Syracuse has many rental properties with landlords not living in Syracuse. Census is sometimes, for some communities, very hard for people to actually fill out the census, give you accurate data. So now, when we're changing things, when the highway's coming down, people will be moving in who haven't been living in the city. How have you guys kind of thought about managing that dynamic, what's is going to change once things really, once people come back in who haven't been in, and things change, we might go back out who haven't been there?
All of our work is based on the 2020 census. That's what it had to be based on.
I understand that.
We can't go into the future and make any decisions or make any determinations. But what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask our chair, which is Molly, to add some little bit of that, this question of that.
Thank you.
Oh, you wanna do it? Okay, I thought Molly would handle it. She doesn't just have to...
Okay. Here, this is Charles Jackson. So, so we thought about those things, but the reality of it is, we can't predict how the city is gonna evolve in terms of, you know, residential movement and/or development. I mean, if you think back to the 70s, when we had all this economic, when they attempted economic development, and then they ran out of money, and then these neighborhoods that was never built, that's a possibility. We can't predict that. There's nothing we can do about that. We can't, can't talk about shifts in communities. We can't think about, you know, if a school closes, that has nothing to do with us, you know? If one side of the city gets economic boom, we can't predict those things. So, we thought about it. We thought about it. At the end of the day, a lot of the things that we looked at is to make sure that every district had certain things that were kind of historical or meaningful. Like, just yesterday, we had a conversation about a park, because we were thinking about moving the line. And it was vehemently knocked down. Not to mess with that park. So, we're thinking about these types of things.
Thank you.
My name is Homer Davis. I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate what he just said. But going forward, I understand the rules you were playing by and was given, the platform. But in terms of what we already know was gonna happen with this bridge, and how it's gonna be laid out, it's really, in my mind, you're doing us a disservice. Okay, I understand that, right now, the data that you're using, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying, okay, that's not as bad as I thought. But when I look at 81, and how much commercial space they're gonna take besides Brick City and all that other stuff, it's really gonna do damage to the community. And that's what's heartbreaking, is that you sit here and say, well, we have to use this right now. But we're not even talking 10, we're talking maybe 2 to 3 years from now. And the dynamics is gonna change dramatically, drastically, how these people live. And that's what's the hardest part of this whole situation is.
It's not that we don't understand, Homer, or that we didn't talk about it. Just by law, we can't do a thing about it.
I understand that. I figured that out.
Yeah. Yeah. Next time you join, we want you. We want you. Next time you join. Because we can't join. We can't.
I would have broke through.
Well, I don't know about that.
I weren't saying, just not to address the whole question, because it's totally valid issue. There's gonna be a couple of different changes, right? So one thing is, the area right next to 81. That's gonna mean population of that district, right? That's gonna mean that that district, they're built. It's a little more power, temporarily. But then, it's gonna reverse, right? I understand. It's gonna be a couple of different changes over a timeline that we, like I said, we talked about, right? Things that we couldn't predict on things.
Straighten my neck. We tried to, we asked folks, are there predictable ways that we can understand how this is gonna look in the next 8 years? And the answer was no. We can't make decisions now within our 1,500 grace amount that will predictably end up with the outcome we want.
And it's gonna be...
Big that, but when, I'm on the Democratic 13th Ward 8th district, and voted weight is given to each district, okay? So now, that changed the dynamics of the weight of the vote the representatives have, which can determine how much money they get, and what goes into what. So even though you can't change the dynamics later, it can have effect on how this city runs and how it operates. And who, what community is gonna get funds, and which one's not gonna get funds. Like the young man just came up and said about the vote, transitional people, there's some parts of the city where people lived all their life, and there's some parts of the city where people come and go. Okay? Hopefully, over time, with the common council and all of that, that you could get more residents to stay in communities as you develop those communities. But it's taken a long time for this city, this city, to get their act together, far as helping each community develop. I see it on certain parts of the city, I see certain things happen in certain communities, because their voice is stronger. Okay? They have a solid foundation. West Scott area, okay? They have a solid foundation. South Side, what you call South Side is, sometimes it's transitional. But there's solid people there. But there's not enough to make the city common council say, look, let's develop this. Even this street right here on South Ave, how long has it been like this since I've been here? Pretty much all my life. One building here, raggedy building there, raggedy building there. But that goes down to the vote. That goes down to the weight of the common councilor or the 13th Ward district person. Now, I understand your situation, but long-term, it can have a drastic effect.
Can I just make a comment on that really quick? This hasn't happened for 20 years. So we hope and pray that what we're doing will affect and make some changes. And so, hopefully, it might make a difference. Okay? But this hasn't been done for 20 years. So what you're talking about, that's in that 20-year timeframe. Okay? And I, you know, we...
I think, yeah, I think we all agree with everything you've said. I'm Colleen Lathey from the 5th District. And I just wanted to point out too, that the current anticipated construction schedule for the 81 in particular is 6 years. And that's assuming it starts today. And that's assuming it's gonna end on time, which, construction of that scale, I can, you know, anticipate that I'm sure is gonna go over a little. So we also really thought that this question of the whole 81 is going to be for the next commission, in the next 10 years for the next census.
So my name is Heather Kogan, and I was actually brought on at the behest of some of the community members to work with Common Cause New York and educate the community about some of the goings-on here. So I want to unpack a lot of the stuff that he said, and, because it was a lot. And back up as some of the comments that were just made. So, yes, these maps are 20 years old. So as far as being represented, you're not. Because you're being represented based off of a map that was designed 20 years ago. So going forward, in 10 years, if you've not been represented for the last 20 years, you guys have a choice here. So we can push this process along to get to where we need to be over the next 10 years, to the point where all of these things we're talking about actually comes into being, and then handle those issues then. So, and however, these maps are only 20, or years, or, not only, but these maps being 20 years old, this is really about 70 years of history that is in these maps. Especially when you talk about 81 specifically. Okay? So, to focus on 81 itself and all of the implications that it's had, or may have, is somewhat unfair to the city as a whole, in my opinion. So if you're looking at it solely based on that, and what could be, then like the commissioners are saying, this is a problem, and this is a process. The census is a constitutional thing. It's been done since pretty much the beginning of recorded history all around the world. We do this every 10 years for a reason. There are rules, there are guidelines that are constitutional. There are rules and guidelines that are on a state level, that are on a local level, as far as this commission is concerned. So, again, all of these concerns are valid, and they're correct. But what we really need to focus on is the bigger picture here. So we need some context. Again, if you look at the maps and what they are right now, they are not representative of the city as a whole. If you look at the projected population on the top map right over here in this, or next to the map right over here in this corner, this is the differential, which is within the law, that 1,500. If you look at the one underneath that, that's one of the current maps. And the differential between some of the districts over these last 20 years is in the thousands between districts. So I also work at Fowler. I'm working with Hillside as a youth advocate. Which this means that although my children, all of my children in my school cannot vote, are not eligible to vote, well, some of them maybe, turning 18 is seniors, they've never been represented. Because although they are not eligible to vote, they are still counted. So none of those children, my child, this child over here, have never been accurately represented in a 20-year-old map. Does that make sense?
That's a problem, you know?
Correct. So, a way to alleviate that problem...
... this process, I don't know if it's 10 years.
Well, this process is new. So this process is very different than what it's ever been before. So like was mentioned before, in 2019, there was a referendum on the ballot, and the people of the City of Syracuse actually voted for this process to take it out of the hands of the common council. And put it in the hands of a citizen-led commission. Because like, it was already stated, these are all citizens of the City of Syracuse, living in all 5 of the districts, who are not getting paid. So they have no vested interest in this process, other than to do what is best for our city. So, again, if you look at the sheer numbers of it, based off these maps, these census tracks are very rigid. And I understand that, and this point has been brought up in several other meetings. But no one here makes these census maps, unfortunately.
What I'm saying, let me...
Yeah, sure.
What I'm saying is this, by the weighted vote that I'm following is election, that's gonna become a problem, because you have, you operate under one system, the Democratic Party operates under a system, the Republicans operate under a system. So that system now is gonna be affected by the way you drew your maps. Okay? So the weighted vote that a person like myself, when I go to the meetings, they say, well, Johnny Johnny is running for that district, and it gives me, as a common council or as a 13th Ward district member, gives me weighted votes to represent that district, that may change in who gets elected to that, to that party, or even a state senator or congressman. That changes. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're right, you're right, you're right. But I'm talking about like the city officials. Okay? So that changes the dynamics of how many people are in that district now, because, and that determines the person representing them, how many weighted votes they get.
Okay.
Bruce, to answer that.
Can I, can I just, we understand, that's good. Bruce Schefrin.
Three.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Two parts. First, we understand your concern about all these other things. We can't care about it. It's not our charge. Second, the other thing hits really close to home. You're talking about justice. You're talking about justice, and to not have what happened to the community when R81 went through it and cut, and cut them off at the knees. And we are, as a group, very aware of not dividing neighborhoods and diluting their political clout. We want to make sure that communities of interest are in a council district, and therefore can be heard by that particular counselor. That was very important to us. That's an issue of justice to us. Not to divide a community and thereby make them powerless and voiceless. So I think that's what you're talking about, and that's what we were sensitive to.
You're a person...
What you did, well, like I said, when 81 comes down, or whether it's 5 years or 2 years from now, what you did here, okay? And I understand what you're saying. That's gonna dilute the population, because people are gonna say, well, I don't want to live on this side of the city no more, let me move over here. Because remember this, when that bridge comes down, let me, just let me make this point. When that bridge comes down, where do you think all that traffic is gonna go? It's gonna go right to the South Side. It's gonna go through all the neighborhoods, all the residencies. They already do it now, coming off the hill, they come down, shooting through Newell, shooting through Brighton, shooting through all the other streets, okay? Which in turn, in my mind, is making the neighborhoods or the residencies say, well, I don't want all this traffic, let me move up to the Strabham, or let me move somewhere else, because of the traffic. Now, when the bridge comes down, that's gonna change the dynamics of how that flows into the city. I'm not, I'm not saying that's your charge. I understand that that's not your charge. I understand that's not your charge. I'm just saying, at this moment, you're saying you can't predict the future, you can't get into the future. I'm saying the future is gonna predict itself, and we're gonna, hopefully, hopefully, we don't have that. But, in my eyes, it's coming. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, if you want to come up, now I'm gonna have to say this, we have, it's now 6:25. We have only 5 minutes left.
So my name is Marino Nave, and I serve as Third Ward Chair. And I think this has to be clarified. Those who are members, whether they're the Democratic or Republican committee, and I have members on my committee, they don't live in my neighborhood, they don't live in the First Council District. Some live in the Fourth, some live on the West Side, because it is determined by the New York State Assembly, what Assembly District. So if you, say you're in Bill Magnarelli's, an example, someone could call me up and can you put you on the Democratic Committee, put you in the Third Ward. That's the way it's set up. Now, the changes have to start in the State Assembly, where we'll say, you have to live in this council district to be a member of the Democratic Committee right there. So everybody has to live within that First. You can't live in the Second, or the Third, or the Fourth, or the Fifth. They have to be in that ward, they have to represent and understand the needs. Like for myself, I should not have to be going over, over on the West Side, I shouldn't have to go on the East Side, I've had to go by Burnett Park Zoo and help petitions to my committee, because they were put there, because, whoa, we share the same assembly. That's ridiculous. And this is what I hope that this commission does, that they will recommend to the New York State Assembly and the New York State Senate, that anyone who serves as a member of a committee, whether Democrat or Republican, that they have to live within that city council district. To determine by that city council district, and not by state senate district, and not by an assembly district. Because until then, as you have said, we're not getting the proper representation.
We want to thank you for coming, and thank you for sharing your thoughts with us this evening. We're so pleased that so many of you came out this evening and shared, and were very, very vocal. And I hear the power, and I hear the voice, and we're grateful. Time's up, folks. It is now time for us to, uh-oh. Hold up, hold up. Not, not time to leave, time's up for us to talk, hold up.
Real quick, we're still taking comments. So go on the Facebook page, go on the, on the website, and leave your comments. And tell your friends and people, leave your comments. We're still moving lines, we're still looking at things, we're still arguing about stuff.
two weeks, we'll be taking comments about the final map that we are going to present to the common council. I just wanted to throw it out there. Yes, and all the comments that we receive, whether they're from these meetings, or written, or on the Facebook, we, we are charged to do a final report after we submit our map to the council. So we will include comments, positive and negative, in our final report, because that's our gift to the next commission in twenty thirty-one, okay? We're gonna say, this is what we heard from the public, okay? And this is how we could have done things better, or worse, or whatever, but we need to hear from you, so please make your comments.
Again, thank you, have a nice evening. Keep in mind, keep looking for us. Have a good evening. Bye-bye. Are you saying goodbye? Robin?